Good evening, everybody. It is September 9th, 2021. It is 6:02 PM. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Yes.
Mike Parsons.
Mike did ask to be excused for work-related reasons.
Samantha Love-Lady here. Mayor Shaw.
Here. We have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance. Ms. Love-Lady, will you do the honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor's report. City website. As some of you have seen, if you've been on there, it is slightly different with navigation bars and whatnot. It's still under construction, but all the content is there. It's fully functional, and so you probably will see some tweaks here and there as we go along and learn the new system. Worden Park Playground Project. The city did receive another grant for $30,000 from Transalta Centraria Generation LLC. This grant is supposed to go towards helping pay for the shelter, the new shelter, and the picnic tables to go with it. It's a kind of a community building kind of grant, and so it's a gathering place and so that will help us to get something even more special for that facility.
Okay, I don't know anything about this new building. Where's that going?
If you remember from the playground design, there is in the back, there's the playground itself, but up front, there was a small 20 by 20 shelter.
Okay.
Covered kitchen area, not kitchen, but covered picnic table area, and it's closer to the playground so that there's shade and picnic tables for the families to sit at while their kids play around them.
I believe that was wheelchair accessible there, too.
Yeah, it's all wheelchair accessible.
So why aren't you using this for the pavilion?
The grant was applied for a new shelter, for the new playground, not for the old one.
Well, what I'm asking is, why wasn't the pavilion taken into consideration? It's already there, it's established.
That's not the way the design... It's the same design that you saw last year.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not really interested in the design, I'm just curious why that wasn't incorporated into this whole thing. It's like the whole north side of that property has just been ignored, period, just out of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have another grant for some new facility, so that should be exciting. The street chip seal grant work that was going to be paid for this summer is going to be pushed off to next summer now. If you remember, we were going to have roughly a mile of city streets in town chip sealed, all grant paid through the TIB. However, the county, who is going to do the work for us, their supplier can't source enough oil to even finish their projects, let alone ours, and so they've worked with the TIB to make sure our grant money will still be available next summer to pay for this, so it got pushed off until next year. There will be a public hearing on September 16th, which is next Thursday, the planning committee's regular meeting. This will be regarding the supportive and transitional housing ordinance. And lastly, there'll be a law enforcement update at our 10-14, October 14th council meeting. Sheriff Rob Snazza will be present to talk about law enforcement changes and then, of course, law enforcement within the city. Council reports.
Oh, I'm not sure. Well, kind of about a report, but first off, October 14th is that big meeting for the whole county with all the cities involved at Bethel Church. It's an all-day event. You haven't been notified of that? I know you have.
I know there's a legislative roundtable on the first Friday in October. I'm not sure about the October 14th one.
It's October 14th, and they're making sure everybody knows about it, and it's about this ordinance. It's...
Who's hosting it, though?
Lewis County, yeah. Yeah, it's quite a big deal. All the commissioners are going to be there, and mayors, council members, and the whole county are invited to be there. It's an all-day event.
Thank you for that.
I'm surprised you haven't gotten an email.
It just reminded me, Diane, I don't see it on the agenda. I had in the mayor's, the commissioner swoop was going to be coming.
On the 23rd, I think it got me.
It got me for special reports.
Okay. Okay. And so I wonder if that's related to that.
I think it probably might be.
So he's probably going to come here personally and give that report.
Because I've called Toledo, I've called Naperville, and I've called the city of Chehalis, and Toledo and Chehalis haven't even heard of this. So this big emergency thing we've got going here isn't that big of an emergency, it just... And I read part of the legislature thing, and they are just saying, you need, we need to get this done, but it's not tomorrow.
Yeah, the state did give us, this is the transitional housing mandate from the state. Well, the state changed the laws, and then we're trying to mitigate those changes for the best that we can for the city. Yeah, the state did give us a deadline, the city's by the end of, the deadline by the end of September to make their changes, but once again, there's, it's one of those, there's a deadline, but then there's no penalty if you miss the deadline. It's one of those things.
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance to get hold of MRSC or Commerce about it, but the three cities around us, especially Chehalis, don't know anything about this, so...
Well, one of the things we've learned over the years is just because other cities are or are not doing something doesn't mean they are or are not doing something right.
Well, you were telling us, this is a whole statewide thing, and everybody has to get on board with it, so I'm sure if it was that big of a deal, they would have thought about it by now. But at any rate, they did hear about the October 14th big meeting concerning this.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
But yeah, so I don't see a big deal about this right now.
Okay.
And this is on the... We're not passing this tonight, are we? Good, because I'm not voting for it. This is ugly. And I mean that about the hearing examiner. I don't like the idea that he's taking everything away from the community, from the city council, the planning committee, the planner. We will have nothing to say about any of it, there won't be any more public hearings, this guy will just take this over, and he's nothing but a hearing examiner. I'm not getting where this is coming from or even why, but I don't like that. That shouldn't be taken out of the hands of the city or the city council. None of this proposal for building or anything like that, what does he know about it? This is what I'm trying to figure out, why this is even in here, and I don't like it. I don't like the authority taken away from the people who should have it.
We have a comment.
I'm not going to...
Ms. Rogers is talking about, there were some, the state during the latest legislative session up in Olympia, they passed some new legislation regarding supportive and transitional housing, so cities would be mandated to have different kinds of care facilities possibly and things like that within the city limits. And so one of the things our attorney and our planner suggested to the city was that we could pass our own ordinance, our own rules, to try to limit the scope of what the state could force on us and have a little bit of control over these changes that might be forced on the city. And so we are working on creating a document that would give the city more control, and part of that is to use what's called a hearings examiner. It's an outside third party who happens to be an attorney that's an expert in land use regulations, and they would look at any petition by a developer that wanted to come to the city and perhaps build one of these facilities, and our hearings examiner would look at this and decide whether or not it was a good fit and whether it could meet the rules that were set in place.
You mean like for homeless people coming through?
Possibly, yeah. There's a lot of different...
It's just a safeguard, it's just a safeguard for the city.
So basically, the state passed some rules.
Yeah.
And we're going to try to make them...
Leave us alone?
Well...
Hurt a little less.
Have a little bit of control over those rules by having our own doc, our own rules. It's a hope, and so...
Well, this guy's going to cost us a lot more money, too.
Well, keep in mind that any costs that that would be incurred would be paid for by the applicant and not the city. So if someone wanted to come in and build a large development for transitional housing, they would apply for a permit, and that permit would pay for the hearings examiner.
I don't see how having this hearing examiner makes any difference in what we're doing right now, passing our own ordinances, and why isn't our attorney doing this? She seems to have been able to do it before.
I couldn't give you some more information about it. I asked some of those same questions, I read some of them at the last meeting, I will forward those to you so you can have those.
Well, I appreciate you doing that, but I still don't like this guy taking full control of this, and I don't see any logical reason for him to do that, that we haven't been doing for years and years and years, and other cities have their planning committees, there are attorneys that do this kind of stuff. He's not protecting us from anything. All he's doing is cutting out the authority of the city council, nobody, the public. Even if the public doesn't show up to a public hearing, they have a right to be here. This concerns the public, this concerns every taxpayer in this community, and they have a right to know what's going on. This guy can do anything he wants to.
What I'll do is I will, I'll get an example. What I'll do is I'll put together an example of an applicant and then the process and why it's important that we have an expert in land use look at this instead of me.
Me.
And Jason, and whoever else.
I thought that's what we're paying this planner for. I thought that's what we're paying this attorney for.
I'll get the details on why that we need an impartial third party and not the paid representatives of the city to do it.
Conflict of interest.
So, because our attorney...
I don't see how it can be a conflict of interest when you're doing an ordinance. So what are we going to do now, now the hearing examiner? Is he going to take over all of our ordinances now?
No, it's just for this one.
It was just for these applicants, for transitional housing.
This is what I don't understand. Explain to me why our city attorney can't make up an ordinance for this, or the planning committee can't listen to whatever they're proposing to build.
I, I'll get an example, and I'll make sure it's very clear, and that way you have those answers, and then from there, then you can decide whether or not you think it's a good idea or not.
Well, I think you should give us the answers right now in the open where the public can hear it, if they choose to. I don't understand it.
Okay, I can read those again like I did the last time.
I don't want you to read it, I want you to explain to me in detail why, what legal thing do we, why we need that. I don't, this doesn't even...
So right now, we're in council reports. This is on the agenda at the end. If you'd like, you could, we can talk about this some more at that council.
All right, go ahead, that's fine.
Do you have any other reports?
Not that I can think of at the moment. I'm sure I'll come up with something.
Any other, any other council members have reports?
I'm not sure if anyone saw it in my column, but our Commissioner Stamper is in the ICU with COVID right now, and his family are asking for prayers and kind of all of our good stuff that we can send his way, but outside of that, I don't have anything.
Was he here last week?
He was here...
He's here pretty regularly, he's pretty involved.
He was here in July sometime.
He was here at another meeting, though, too, more recently, I believe.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, it was, it was in July. It was either early or mid-July.
I know he's active at our meetings, so if you're wondering where he is, he's...
Yep, I seen him in the paper here.
Yeah.
Any other reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for 9/9/2021.
You have a motion by Ms. Love-Lady to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
On the meeting minutes, I don't remember where it was in the minutes, but it was written Donna Hall on one of the notes, like it was a second motion.
Okay, we'll fix that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it was exactly.
Right here, page two.
Page two. But outside of that, I didn't have any corrections.
See, people, they actually read these things.
Right.
I wasn't here for the end, so I remember coming in.
Well, I wasn't here at all, so I wanted to make sure I kind of read through and knew what was going on.
I'll make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for 8/26/21 with the change of the last name to Rogers, or the first name to...
Yeah, I wasn't sure who it was.
Well, you just say we split, right?
You didn't have an "a".
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the meeting minutes for 8/26/21 with the noted change. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Love-Lady. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are you going to entertain the expense for the B.O.B. incubator?
I missed it, thank you very much. That should have been during the agenda approval, it should have been a change to the voucher amount.
Do I need to re-sign my motion?
It's okay, let's just do it again. A new, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for 9/9/2021 with the changes to, I'll let you say it, to the agenda amount?
I...
I should not ask for a motion. I've never done that before, have I?
No, no.
I'm just all confused.
No, you've got me all confused, what am I doing? I make a motion to do what he said.
No, you can't do that.
No, well, that's what I...
You need to add the incubator, the separate island from the vouchers.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting for 9/9/2021 with the addition of the cost for the incubator. Good?
Good.
And the payroll?
Oh, and the payroll.
And the total voucher amount.
And the change in the voucher amount. Do I need to say that? $64,703.11?
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda for 9/9/2021 with the change in the voucher amount as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love-Lady. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, I will do better at remembering that. If I had a larger, more brighter note in front of me to remind me of that.
Do we have to add this to, like, city business, though?
Okay, we've already approved meeting minutes. Moving on to voucher approval. Do we have a motion to approve the vouchers with the changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers with the total being $64,703.11.
We have a motion by Ms. Love-Lady to approve the vouchers as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Secuted by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Randy, are you there?
Yes, just said aye.
Thank you. Any opposed?
Yes, glad to know.
Motion carries. All right, special reports. Lewis County Sheriff's Department, monthly report. We're finally here.
Good evening. Sergeant, please, in Sheriff's Office, for the month of August, the Lewis County Law Enforcement Trolls for Vader, during the month of Vader, sorry, during the month of August, there were a total of 378 citizen contacts, two calls when a deputy was dedicated to the city of Vader, 14 calls when a deputy was not dedicated to the city of Vader, for a total of 16 calls. There were 13 traffic stops in which three infractions were written and one criminal citation, and there was one total arrest during that month, and that was when no one was dedicated to Vader.
What was the arrest for? This is, you say it was a felony arrest or misdemeanor?
No, that was, fortunately, it was a traffic arrest.
Oh, okay.
So it was initiated by someone, because it was, somebody was driving through Vader, made a traffic stop, and made a traffic...
So we don't have to worry about our own little criminals, then?
Yeah, exactly. They could have been from Ryderwood, you know?
Now we're important? We can't blame the old ladies in Ryderwood, that just feels cruel.
I just said I...
We can blame Winlock, but we can't blame...
It was the grandson, he was visiting.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then, lastly, the, on a special report, this is a, kind of a, more of a notice, on September 23rd at our next council meeting, Lewis County Commissioner Swoop and Kelly Johnson Smith, who I believe is a Centraria councilwoman, will be here to discuss housing.
Oh, good. Yeah, I've been so excited. Maybe that's the 14th.
So, lots of stuff coming up. All right, city business, number one. Council to confirm recommendation of Kristen Vitus as the admin assistant to the clerk's office. Kristen is here. Hi, Kristen. She's worked out great, she's very qualified, catching on very well. I was commenting how well she was using the stapler earlier today, so she's quick learn, and so we're excited to have her here. If we could get a confirmation, that would be wonderful.
What do you want us to say?
Oh, the same thing we've done before, just a motion to confirm the recommendation of Ms. Vitus to the position.
Go ahead, Jason.
Oh.
Unless you wanted to...
I was wondering...
Unless you let me go now.
To accept the recommendation for Kristen Vitus for the administrative assistant to the clerk's office.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the recommendation of Ms. Vitus to the position. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Love-Lady. Any discussion? Questions? She's here.
I don't know, where do you live?
I live in Locks, we just bought our first home at the end of December.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations.
So you're just new to Lewis County, or?
Yeah, originally from Long Beach area.
Oh, okay.
So really looking forward to the small town feelings.
Oh, well, you'll get it.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving Ms. Vitus, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Item number two on city council business, council to consider awarding bid to find Polo Construction and Restoration for the historic jail foundation replacement project and authorizing the mayor to enter the contract. As you know, we've been talking about this all summer long. We advertised for bids through the MRSC routers, I don't know, when was the first time we did that, May or something?
June 23rd, then on July 29th.
Yeah, we didn't get any responses at all in June, and then we did it in July, and we got one response from our own local construction company. So I was concerned that with only one response, we wouldn't get our minimum of three, but I followed up with MRSC on that, and they said you just have to solicit three, you don't have to necessarily get three bids, so if you get one, you can go with one if it's reasonable. And so we're definitely good to go on that, and so, I don't know, how many companies have actually solicited dozens of that second time, and no one responded?
Yeah, we were looking for a while.
So, anyway, you see there, the bid there, it's for roughly 28?
26.
26 plus engineering, I think. So very reasonable for the amount of work that they're going to be doing. I'm confident in recommending that.
So he does realize that this is a historical building?
I...
He don't put concrete steps up the front of the jail.
Right, I think if you look through there, you'll see that it talks about the porch and maintaining the porch, so...
No, it says he's going to put concrete steps. This is not good.
Jason, we have quorum, if you need to go.
I do kind of need to, um...
I figured.
Words kind of exploded on the...
Okay.
Because Randy's on the phone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daly is being excused for a work-related emergency. Hopefully not literally exploding.
Yeah, the burners didn't like pop or anything, right?
The box...
I got a trainee down there. They'll do well.
I'll make sure to follow up on that if he's really thinking about putting in concrete steps. I don't know if you've noticed, there is already a significant amount of concrete, the ramp that goes up is a solid pore, and so there's already a ramp there.
Yes, I know there is a ramp there, and I know who installed that ramp, but the thing is, this is a historical building, and we need to keep it.
Yeah, you want to keep the stats accurate.
And putting four feet wide concrete steps does not quite fit the historical look of the jail, so, you know, maybe he needs to do some homework or something. I don't approve of him at all. I just say that right now.
We can adjust that little detail, it's not a big deal.
Well, it is a big deal.
It's not a big deal to adjust it.
Well, it's a big deal about the way it winds up looking when he's done with it. And then I want to ask about the roof, when is that planned?
So the roof, we have that in the budget for the roof, however, until the building is re-leveled on the new foundation, putting the roof on before you re-level a building
No, I understand that.
Would skew that, so the idea would be to do both the windows and the roof as soon as the foundation work is done.
And who's going to do that?
We have not solicited bids for that.
All right.
I move to award the bid to find Polo Construction and Williams Restoration for the jail foundation replacement and authorize the mayor to enter the contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to award the bid to find Polo Construction for the jail foundation. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love-Lady. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Well, I have some concerns about this, so I will say aye, but I don't like it.
Motion carries. Well, any of those, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, council to consider Rogland's application for payment number three, $464,286... As you know, the wastewater treatment plant grant will reimburse this, and so the engineering company, Silver West, has gone through this application, and they are confident that the work has been completed as described and that this payment is warranted.
Did we miss the Vader line sub request?
I'm sorry, Randy, what was that? Did we miss what?
The city business, I have on mine, item two, the Vader line sub request to use the part.
You're right, that is missing as well.
Yeah, actually, I remember reading that in my other packet.
It's on the, I mean, it's on the agenda that I'm looking at, but this kind of got skipped.
It was on the agenda.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
You're right, that was on the agenda as well. What has happened to our agenda?
I don't know where it... I remember reading that, now that he says something.
Yeah, I do, too.
Well, I keep on mine, and I'm lying, I see it.
Why is that on mine?
We have newer printed ones in here, Randy, and it's not on here.
Oh, oops.
I think I have, I have one of the emails coming in.
I didn't mean to interrupt your flow, but...
You're right, well...
We can pick it up on the last item, I guess.
It's not imperative that we take care of that one tonight, anyway, so, let's stick to, let's stick to number three, the application for payment by Roglands.
I make a motion to approve the payment to Roglands as written.
We have a... We have a motion by Ms. Love Lady to approve Rogan's application for payment number three as written. Do we have a second? Secuted by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to city business number four. Council to review the updated ordinance, which has added the thousand-foot spacing requirement for supportive and transitional housing. Remember at the last council meeting, Mr. Parsons was talking about looking up that ordinance and other things, other options that the city could do. And one of those was to limit how close different structures were to each other. So you couldn't have quite so many qualifying structures packed in into one space. And so at his recommendation, we looked it up and sure enough, we were able to add that in there. So the ordinance is unchanged other than adding that extra requirement. So further helping the city's ability to mitigate these mandates. I just wanted to have that on the business for city, to council to take a look at. If you had any other opinions or suggestions, to let them know. Otherwise, there's nothing else to really do on this ordinance right now.
So what I'm gathering is they passed something in Olympia and now we kind of have to try to cover ourselves.
It was, yeah, it was one of the many changes that came out of Olympia. And it's a state law, we'd have to do it, but we can add our little.
Extra stuff.
We can add our extra stuff on top to give us some extra control.
Okay.
And that's all this is, is giving us control over what the state is asking us to do.
Is that the only thing that you're changing from what the state is requiring is a thousand feet? Is that?
No, no, what I was saying was that, I mean, the whole ordinance is, it gives us control. From the last meeting when we talked about it, the only thing that's changed was adding a thousand-feet requirement.
And who wrote this ordinance?
Our attorney and our city planner put it together and they used, they used information that they got from other cities that created it too. Since this was kind of a mandate from the state, I didn't want to spend too much money on it. And so they kind of took bits and pieces from other cities, put it together into one that would work for us, tweaked it a little bit, and then have just been adding on as we've been asking them to.
Okay, but you know, you made a statement earlier about not paying attention to what other cities do and do our own. So what cities did they glean all this information from?
I don't know.
Apparently it wasn't local.
Maybe the Lewis County cities aren't as with it as the rest of the state.
Oh, I don't believe that. I think that's just an excuse to.
No, I don't, I don't have all those answers for you. I just know that our paid representatives ask us or suggested that we do this to give us some control over what the state was asking us to do. And so we're acting on those recommendations.
Well, I'm not, I am curious what cities, like they did full stuff from, so maybe just pass Jennifer.
I can find that.
Just because that way we can compare like.
Sure.
It seems that any time we do employee raises, we all check the local cities to see what they're paying for. And now we have this, well, we can't check with Lewis County cities because of, I don't know why. Those are the ones that are around us and those are the people that we're going to be attracting as well to our area. They're all small cities.
We have the option of not doing anything. We cannot do this at all and just take the state's rules as they are. We don't adopt anything. They're just.
Yeah, it just is what it is.
They pass something and now we have to live by it. All this does is allows us, allows us control over those new rules.
Okay, so I don't mind that, but I object to this guy. This guy, there's no reason for that, none at all that I can see. All of a sudden, our attorney isn't qualified to do this. Nor is the planner. And I don't like the control being taken away from the city and the taxpayers, the people that are paying for this guy. And he's not cheap, I can guarantee you.
He's not, which is why whoever applies for this permit to build the building in town will pay that fee as part of their permit. The city doesn't pay it. The applicant pays for it, the developer of some kind probably.
Whether they do or we do or whoever does, I don't like the idea of the control and the authority being taken away from the council, the planning committee, the taxpayers of this community. And we won't know anything about what he does. He is the total authority on anything that gets passed.
I will give you, I will, like I said, I will put together a example of how something, like a scenario. Like, all right, X, Y, Z developer shows up, wants to do something in the city. All right, how is that, then how does that process work, including the hearing examiner? And why is that beneficial? I'll put that together for you and I'll prepare that for you and I'll bring it to you.
And that's what I'm afraid is coming, is that all of the authority is going to be gone for everything we do. Any development, this hearing examiner is going to be doing it.
I can understand that.
Yeah, I don't like that.
That you would be worried about that.
That's what I see coming right here.
But I mean, as far as the hearing examiner is, we're only talking about these situations for transitional supportive housing. That's the only ordinance that speaks about that kind of thing. So it's not all the other things you're talking about.
Well, I can't see if, if the attorney and the planning committee and the city council can't take care of this, then I don't see how we can take care of anything.
I'll find that out for you. Is it coming?
Does it cost that much? How's it going to benefit us to bring more people or whatever in? If you've got to pay this exorbitant fee, why would you want to come here?
Well, the fee is, I'd have to look at what the new fee schedule is going to say. It's a few thousand dollars, I think, is what the permit fee is for it. And so that's a lot, but you know, in the grand scheme of a developer that probably is building something, a few thousand dollars is probably not very much to pay for them. So it's not that much.
It'd be a lot for a house, but it's not a lot for development is what you're going to know.
If you're building a business, you know, you really deal with me because you want me here. This sounds like you don't want nobody here, so you don't charge them all this money.
Well, this is only for supportive and transitional housing, not for regular residents.
If the gas station wants to come in, they don't have to deal with.
That's not what this is about. This is very specific.
That's what I couldn't understand.
Yeah, it's very specific. Any other comments on this ordinance?
I want to read the bill myself and look at it. Just because I haven't had a chance, I wasn't here last meeting.
Sure. Yeah, it's not, it's not a for vote tonight or anything.
Yeah, exactly. So we have time to think about it.
Yeah, there's, there's, it had to be right out of the commerce and CIPA and all that stuff.
I printed the bill off. I didn't get a chance to read it yet. So I just did it this afternoon because I didn't get off work until.
Can I copy that from you before you leave?
Yeah, sure. I think it's twenty-one pages.
Woo, okay.
All right, any other, any other discussion on this?
Nothing.
Okay.
I just want to read it first.
Yeah, absolutely, there's lots of time. That's the end of the agenda, public comment.
Don't we need to do the incubator? I thought we added that to five. Didn't we? No? Yes?
Item number five, the incubator approval.
We just need to make a motion to approve purchasing. Okay, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the new incubator we need.
We have a motion by Ms. Love Lady to approve the wastewater treatment plant lab incubator. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? This would be for three thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, public comment. Any members of the public? No, nobody?
No, I'm not comfortable.
Nobody?
I'll think of it, I'm going to.
All right, elected official comment. Any elected officials have any comments?
I think I already.
All right. All right. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-two PM. Thank you very much.